We're again resuming the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council and our city attorney will report out.
No reportable action from closed session.
So our attendants, we have Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilwoman Miles.
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pitts.
Here.
Mayor Rosini.
Here.
All present.
Today, I will ask Mayor Protem Pitts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
On behalf of a grateful nation, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, I would ask all those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the City Council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. We've already reported out that there's no reportable action on a closed session, so we'll move forward to presentations. Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members, city staff, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. I am Lieutenant Rich and this is the November 2018 Villa Park Crime Report. In the month of November 2018, the Sheriff's Department responded or initiated to 371 calls or events. This is an increase of 60 from the 311 that we had in 2017. However, a majority of those were deputy-initiated. As deputy-initiated events in 2018 were up 20 percent. What those are are car stops, field stops where they're talking to someone, vacation checks, incidents where the deputy felt they needed to talk to someone or wanted to talk to someone, or citizen assist. Why that is important is the next thing I have to report. In November of 2018, our Part 1 crimes in the city of Villa Park were, we had one reported residential burglary. This was in the 19,000 block of Mesa where there was a loss of jewelry that was reported missing from a home while the resident was on vacation. We did have a second reported Part 1 crime, and that was a vehicle theft of a 2000 BMW that had been missing for over a month and was in possession of an ex-girlfriend who refused to return it. That has since been recovered and that case has been cleared. Deputies also issued 26 traffic citations and eight parking citations. There were three traffic collisions during the month of November. On November 1st, there was a hit-and-run in the 10,000 block of Vita Drive where someone ran into some trash cans and knocked over a mailbox. On the 13th, out here in front of the Rouse, a vehicle backed into a pedestrian walking to the store. That pedestrian was taken to the hospital with a broken ankle. On the 18th, on Henderson Way and Mesa Drive, there was a hit-and-run of a parked vehicle. That is all that I had to report for November. However, I would like to talk about a couple incidents that actually happened in December. The first was on December 7th. There was a swatting incident that occurred at Villa Park High School and Villa Park Elementary School. A swatting incident is basically a false report of an emergency to law enforcement trying to get someone into trouble. And this happened to a kid who was going to school in one of our neighboring cities. He was online gaming and angered some of his game mates or people he was playing games with. They were able to trap in his phone number and use his phone number to phone in bomb threats and active shooter threats to seven schools in Anaheim, Orange, and Villa Park. The two in Villa Park were Villa Park High School and Villa Park Elementary. Those seven schools immediately went into a shelter-in-place status. I responded as well as representatives from Orange PD, Anaheim PD, OCFA, and the city, as well as Orange Unified School District to the school district headquarters, working collaboratively. Within two hours of the report, we were able to substantiate that it was false and was a swatting incident and all the schools returned to regular status. We did keep an additional presence at the schools for a remainder of the day and also went into a reunification process for any of the parents who wanted to reunite with their kids and take them out of school. I also had the pleasure, two days later, on the 9th, excuse me, to attend the Dry Land Boat Parade in the city of Villa Park. That was a first for me and it was a pleasure, very enjoyable. We had over 25 reserves and 20-plus explorers who volunteered their time to help make that parade a possibility. And I would expressly like to thank the Villa Park Foundation for providing food and feeding all of them prior to their time that day. It was a very nice event and it was a pleasure. My wife came out with me and had a very nice time. That's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to compliment the sheriff because when we did have that incident in Villa Park at the schools with the misreporting of the incident, the sheriff was extremely responsive and I was able to keep the council advised without having to prompt them and call, see what was going on. So I just wanted to thank them. I think that we get very good service from the sheriff and I just, this is one of those opportunities when they do step forward and we were well ahead of the curve. So by the time it hit social media, we'd already been able to notify you what was going on, which is a rarity in these days. So I just want to thank the sheriff and Lieutenant Rich especially because he did an excellent job of keeping us informed.
I'd also like to thank Lieutenant Rich. Thank you for reminding me. Today, his deputies responded to two separate events. One in Midway City, beginning last night, that continued well into this morning, that called upon him and his deputies to have a high degree of restraint and bravery and take somebody into custody over in Midway City. And many of those same deputies have on occasion worked here. They all deserve a huge pat on the back from us. Also at Hughes Middle School today, they responded to a very significant event and they did a fantastic job. It does not go, I should say, it's not lost upon me that our own lieutenant in charge of police service has been up for probably going on about 20 hours right now. And thank you for your leadership and your deputies' courage.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just another comment. You know, it is the holiday season and I think we all need to be diligent about package delivery and, you know, locking our vehicles and things of that nature. I've seen, you know, on Facebook, one of our neighbors, their truck was ransacked, you know, not too long ago. So I really, really encourage people to lock their vehicles, be diligent with package delivery because, you know, there are people walking the streets that will take advantage of that. So just, it's holidays. Want everyone to enjoy the holiday, so.
Excellent comment. Thank you. Next report is from the Orange County Fire Authority.
It just says coincidence. I believe the name is similar.
I don't believe we're related.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem, council, city staff, and members of the community. I'm Kelly Zimmerman, Battalion Chief with the Orange County Fire Authority, and this is my report for November and December 2018. There were a total of 32 responses by Orange County Fire Authority and the city during this reporting period. The majority of those incidents were for emergency medical services with a total of 21 rescue and EMS responses. There was no reported fire loss or injuries during this period. Last month, in partnership with the city, Orange County Fire Authority provided emergency preparedness and general first aid training to the residents of Villa Park. Training was conducted in two four-hour sessions. Seventeen residents took advantage of this training. Participants were provided a backpack with goggles, gloves, and a small first aid kit. And we're actually looking forward to providing this training again later in the spring. The Sparkle of Toy Drive is well underway. All local fire stations are collecting toys if residents are interested in donating. I also would like to remind residents that sandbags are available at Fire Station 23 should there be a need during the winter storms. This month's safety campaign is Christmas Tree Fire Safety, reminding residents to place your trees away from fireplaces, heater vents, air ducts, or other heat-producing sources. Check and fill your water daily. Christmas Tree fires result in five times more fatalities or deaths than other holiday fires, so remove your tree promptly after the holidays. For this and other safety messages, please visit www.ocla.org. And this conducts my report. I'm available for any questions or additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Villa Park Library?
I'd like to take the opportunity, we have a new city librarian. I'll let her introduce herself, but she comes to us from the OC public library system and we'd like to extend a warm welcome. And she's been just new on the job within a week or two, I believe, so.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been with your library for about a week, long enough to know how lucky I am, not long enough to have a lot to report. I'm coming to you from San Clemente, and there I was the adult services librarian, so I did a lot of work with programs and classes and community outreach for adults. And before that, I was the head of Information Services for a district in Colorado. And there I worked a lot with small businesses and nonprofit groups, doing a lot of classes and helping people connect with a lot of our electronic resources. So I managed the electronic database budget and collection. And I also was responsible for programs and outreach at our branches, so that's my background a little bit. I really, right now, I'm doing a lot of information collecting and trying to get to know the community. I think the library is at its best when we know the goals of the people we're working with so we can help people connect with everything that we have. Our books and our children's programs are great, but we have a lot of hidden treasures ourselves. And in January, I'll be introducing three of them. The library provides subscriptions to a lot of electronic learning platforms. So I'm teaching a class in January and it is Library Resources for Job Training and Career Exploration. And for that, I will be just offering a brief introduction on how to get into three of the best tools that the library offers for online learning. We have Universal Class, and that has over 500 different continuing education courses that people can take. And we'll be talking about Learning Express. That is a subscription that can help you build a resume. It walks you right through it and lets you explore different careers according to your interests. And also Lynda.com. I'll be introducing people to that. And you might be familiar with that. It's a product that's been around for a while. You can learn software and a lot of business programs in that. And the library provides a subscription to cardholders, so you can get to that from home. And that's my first project. We have all of our regular programs continuing, the Storytimes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're looking at adding a lot more classes for adults and doing more outreach and a lot of good things to come in the new year. And if you have any suggestions, I'm open to ideas. I really want to know what the community has going on, so I hope to see you out and coming into the library. Thank you.
Could you tell us your name?
I'm Shawna Byrd.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Welcome.
Next, we'll have council member meeting attendance reports, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. I believe that was by.
Councilman Nelson, so I don't believe they had a meeting.
Correct. No meeting. Orange County Sanitation District?
I attended the board meeting on November 28th and the operations committee meeting on December 5th. During both these meetings, mostly routine operational matters were discussed. One development that is good to see is that they've begun moving some of their engineers out of the temporary trailers where they've, some of these engineers have spent their entire career, like retiring, always having worked out of a temporary trailer into permanent office buildings. So they're starting the transition to move into permanent quarters and also we're continuing to plan our new administration building. That's all.
Orange County Fire Authority, the board was dark for the month of December, so no Orange County Library Advisory Board?
No meeting.
No meeting? Okay. Budget and Finance?
No meeting.
No meeting. City Schools Advisory?
No meeting.
No meeting. Community Development?
We held a meeting yesterday and several agenda items tonight are on the agenda for your review. We did have an incident that I thought maybe we might want to give a report on from last night to today.
Sure.
On Mesa Drive.
We believe that, and we received a phone call this morning from the Serrano Water District. They had some people reporting low water pressure and eventually determined that there was a leak, I'd rather large leak, on Mesa Drive just east of uphill from Henderson. And it was, it basically undermined Mesa, the downhill slope of the road and the road itself, and a significant amount of rain, I mean water, was released. They, Serrano was able to, probably by 8:00 this morning, they had stopped the water flow. However, the damage had already been done, so there is a significant damage to the slope and undermining of the road itself. So Serrano has been actively engaged in it. As of this afternoon, they have stabilized, they reported they have stabilized the leak. They will be going at a staged process, so we want to give the residents warnings. We've already started printing out things on our feeder and our website, and Serrano's been notifying as well. What they're going to see is the area will be fenced off. This afternoon, they did some slurry backfill and riprap, basically coating on the upper portion just below the pipe, which will allow them to actually make the repairs. So what they're doing is stabilizing so they can go in and make the repairs. Then they'll be removing the washout material from the ravine because all the water and the mud went down into the ravine. There is a proper soil replacement and compaction at the bottom. They've already had a soils consultant out today and working onsite and working that. And then they'll have to repair the road. All in all, this is probably going to take about a week of repair. So residents are going to have to bear with us because like tomorrow, for instance, Mesa will be closed, probably from about 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the evening, while they do some stabilization work. And at some point, when they can, the uphill portion will be narrowed, is still stable enough to drive on. So they'll be letting people drive on that, but not tomorrow because they're going to have heavy equipment and stuff in there. It will be a methodical, safe process and one of the things that we're talking, the city engineer was on, came in and he's onsite today because the slope is going to have to be stabilized as well. That's the other issue. And the tree that was hung on by the roots will be removed tomorrow after they stabilize it because they don't want to remove the roots and have more of something come down. Anyway, nobody is without water. There might be some water pressure issues about low pressure in the neighborhoods because it was a main link to the Martinique area. But as far as this time, Serrano is working on it and they are having crews and engineering crews and outside support working on this on a very diligent. But the residents are going to have to, I would advise them candidly, if there's an alternate route, to avoid Mesa, probably for the next week. That's about.
Could you, do you mind? Could you highlight about sending notices out on the feeder for people to be aware?
We had, we have sent out a notice today for the caution about the roads. Basically, we're transmitting information as received from Serrano. Serrano has a lead on this project. It is their project, so I want to make that very clear. So they are making the decisions, they're hiring and doing all the work, and it is at their expense that it's all being done. What we're trying to do is get the communication to the residents. So we'll be posting information on our feeder and our website as we get it. We had, I believe, two feeders alerts go out today, and anything else we can get out, we'll get out as quickly as possible. So if residents have a question, they can certainly call us or the Serrano Water District who's prepared to deal with the issue.
Well, they're also notifying people as well.
They're notifying through their communication materials as well. Again, we're trying to coordinate as much as possible their information out, so we're not releasing anything new. We're releasing what they ask us to renew, to release. So that we're, they're, I guess, an emergency operation type of thing. They're the lead agency and we're going to defer to them and take our lead from them. Is that?
Actually, I just wanted to highlight that if people were, wanted to know what was going on, that they can contact the city and be put on the feeder list so they can get those updates by email and be in the loop.
Sure. Absolutely.
Great points. Thank you, Chad. Anything further? Okay. Friends of the Villa Park Library?
No report.
Human Resources, no report. Infrastructure Management Advisory?
The committee met on November 29th and they're continuing to focus on pavement management planning.
Thank you. Investment Advisory?
There was no meeting.
Thank you. Law Enforcement Advisory, no meeting. Public Safety, no meeting.
Oh, no meeting.
Public Works and Engineering?
No meeting.
Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
Well, I think everybody knows that we had the Santa Parade, I mean the parade, and we also had the Santa Tour. I'd like to extend my personal gratitude to the foundation, board, and all the members for a wonderful two-day event. It's always wonderful to, you know, go around our lovely city and see all the kids come running out of the house and some in pajamas and some not. It was a wonderful event. And then the boat parade. Lieutenant Rich, you know, thank you for everything that you all did and fire as well. It was just a great event. And we thank the Services Foundation for both of those events and all the hard work that the volunteers and the board put into that event. So thank you.
Well spoken. Thank you. That's the end of reports. Public comments. At this time, the members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will be also provided. We're public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and three minutes for all comments. Steve?
Thirty minutes, I think you said three. I accidentally said.
I'm sorry.
It's thirty minutes for all comments.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon.
Clarification. We've received no requests to speak unless anyone has one that hasn't handed in. We have an individual.
We have one.
Yes.
Welcome. If you could give us your name and your address, please.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Bella Mendoza and I am the project coordinator for CityNet. I'm here this evening to talk to you about the 2019 Orange County Point in Time Count. CityNet is a nonprofit organization which provides homeless solutions for cities in Orange County. We partner with law enforcement, city and county agencies, nonprofit organizations, and the faith community to offer street outreach services to engage homeless neighbors and link them to available emergency services, healthcare, mental and behavioral health services, and especially housing. We refer people to any and all beds that exist through the county's continuum of care, including emergency shelters, transitional housing programs, family relocations, rapid rehousing, housing for specialized populations like homeless youth, veterans, victims of domestic violence, and permanent supportive housing. Since our work in Orange County began in January 2015, CityNet has collaborated with over 200 agencies in the county to exit more than 3,000 homeless neighbors from the streets with a 90% retention rate. As a homeless solutions agency, CityNet is also committed to collecting robust data to accurately define the scale and scope of homelessness in our communities. As such, we have been contracted with cities to conduct 21 city-level and regional homeless census's, including the entire north service planning area of the county earlier this year. And now the county of Orange has contracted with us to lead the 2019 Point in Time Count in January. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides around $23 million annually to Orange County for housing and homeless services. HUD mandates a count of homeless neighbors in odd-numbered years and the next count will be on January 23rd and 24th. In the count, hundreds of volunteer teams will be, will use smartphones and tablets equipped with GIS technology to provide accurate geographical data of where and when homeless neighbors were surveyed. Each team will walk or drive maps to conduct surveys with those who are homeless within the boundaries of that particular map. The data collected will yield updated and accurate demographics of the homelessness and will aid the county in assigning the appropriate resources needed to effectively respond to homelessness in each community. But we need more volunteers and for more information on how to get involved, please take a flyer and a fact sheet, or you can visit our website at everyonecountsoc.org. And we hope to have a strong representation from Villa Park. And we look forward to returning here to report on the census findings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, just, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Stone?
I'm, I'll take them. Thank you.
Sure.
We have no other speakers unless there are anyone else that wanted to speak on a non-agendized item.
I think Councilmember Pitts wants to say.
Yeah, I have, I have one more.
Mayor Protem, excuse me.
I neglected to thank one particular individual who did amazing work over that weekend to facilitate not only the Santa Tour but the boat parade. This individual gives a lot of his personal time, both Saturday and Sunday, to ensure that we all have a wonderful event, and we can't pull it off without him. And that's Mike Knowles, our city worker. He is amazing. I mean, that guy gets out of the truck, he carries that big old Santa chair on top of his head, sits it down in front of the fire truck, he's running after candy canes, you know, he does everything. He's a jack of all trades and he does everything. And I hope that you, from the entire council and the foundation, you'll extend our gratitude.
I will do that.
Without a doubt. Thank you. All right. Public hearing. No other public comments? Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
Item number two is the monthly waiving of the reading where we do that to move forward our meetings in an expeditious and efficient manner. Basically, it waives the reading in full of the ordinances, resolutions, and meeting minutes, and those documents are all provided in the agenda for available, so we would, available for review should anyone be interested. We would recommend approval this time.
So moved?
I'll second.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
So we'll go to just, what happened is your system will start blinking. When it blinks, you've got the chance to vote. And at that point, we will know who has not voted and who has.
You don't need public comment on that in any other shape or form?
Yeah, you do, but I'm just clarifying because I know at least one of the new councilwoman has asked me how this system works, if she'll know how to vote. So I want to make sure this is the opportunity. But obviously, if there's any public comment on this.
It sounds like the councilmembers don't have any questions. If staff correct me if I'm wrong. If that's the case, then is there any public on, any public hearing, or excuse me, public comment on this matter? Okay? And it sounds like, is there any discussion? Nope. We have a motion and a second. Steve, let's go ahead and vote.
You just need to go ahead and vote. Okay, and that's a, pass is 5-0.
Thank you. Our next hearing is the conditional use permit 2018-04 at 1-8592 Mesa Drive. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay. At first, I would ask you to open the public hearing, if you would. So you will officially open the hearing, if you would, Mayor. And then I'll turn it over. Staff will give a presentation, so we need to open.
Let's go ahead and open the hearing.
Okay. Ray?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you to see and for your consideration is a conditional use permit is noted. And a conditional use permit is to allow for a new resident to have garage doors that are over 18 feet in height. Again, this is a, this is a future home and the home includes two sets of double garage doors, roll-up doors, and the property owner is wanting to have taller garage doors because he owns multiple vehicles that must store these garage spaces that have a higher profile, hence the need for taller garage doors. One set is 10 feet in height, the other one is 12 feet in height. Architecturally, the garage doors and structure itself is well-integrated. And a conditional use permit is to allow for a new resident to have garage doors that are over eight feet in height. Again, this is a, this is a future home and the home includes two sets of double garage doors, roll-up doors, and the property owner is wanting to have taller garage doors because he owns people that must store these garage spaces that have a higher profile, hence the need for taller garage doors. One set is 10 feet in height, the other one is 12 feet in height. Architecturally, the garage doors and the structure itself is well-integrated, as part of the whole building, it's not out of proportion. The other thing too is that this home will sit on a cat elevation that's possibly potentially blurred and will supply which will, you know, the garage door will appear to be lower. And once the front yard setback landscape treatment is, is screened harder, all of the garage doors, so not only screened but also enhance the appearance and add interest to the streetscape along Mesa Drive, along the front end of this property. The, this item was one of the many items that went before the Community Development Committee meeting. The committee members voted to recommend that it be forwarded to the whole council for consideration. There were no members of the community that was present that evening to support, to speak for or against this item. In advance of this meeting, city staff sent out courtesy notice letters to the adjacent properties. Also, the property owner secured support letters from his neighbors. And in advance of this meeting, in accordance with the municipal code, we sent out public hearing notices. I did speak to one property owner here at City Hall that I believe resides across the street from this property. And she basically just wanted to know the scope of work. She expressed no opposition to the conditional use request that you're reviewing this evening. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Brian Price, who is the project architect, who I've been working with for part of almost two years on this project, is here and will be able to answer any questions when we may have to. Thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff on this?
A quick question, just to clarify, on the plans that are provided to us, do the garages look clear? Is that just a function of the diagrams or is that?
Could we ask you to, excuse me, could we ask you to move to the podium so we could, it's for the record?
Thank you.
Brian Price, Pace Architecture, the architect for the project. Yeah, and in that, in the rendering, they do appear clear and you can see some of the objects in there, but there actually would be obscure glass, but they are glass panels.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from council? Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? If so, please step forward to the podium, support or otherwise. Councilmembers, is there any discussion on this matter? Is there a motion on this matter?
I'll second.
Second.
We need to close the hearing before you.
Okay.
I'm new at this, forgive me.
We're working through it, we'll get through it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing on this matter, thank you for the reminder. I heard a motion.
Motion to approve the project.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and vote.
Go ahead and vote.
It passes by a five oh vote.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item number four and open the hearing for a conditional use permit.
Go ahead, this is for the Rosenau, 18631 Rosenau Drive. This item was heard yesterday at the seat, at the Community Development Committee meeting. Based on the events of that meeting and the preferences of the CDC to continue this item, staff are recommending that this, this item be continued until the next meeting of the CDC in January and subsequently, should that be a positive, to come forward to the city council meeting on January 22nd.
Okay. Correct me if, correct me if I'm wrong, then there's gonna be no staff report and there's no public comments on this?
We would not be addressing it, however, we would, we would have to have a vote to continue the public hearing because it was a notice hearing. So we'll need a vote to continue.
Motion to continue?
Motion, so, so moved.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Just the reasoning, I mean, this is somebody who's applied for something and we're delayed, I'm sure there's a good reason, I was just curious what it was.
There's, there were several that were brought up, there's one with, had to do with the neighbors, things of that nature, so we just thought it would be best, better served that people work things out and talked and came back next week, next, next month. And I think there's some other thing, other circumstances like setbacks and things like that that need to be looked at with a city engineer, so.
Excellent.
Part of the reason why we just felt it would be served to move it till next month.
Any further questions? We have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
Just to clear, the motion is to continue until next month, correct?
That is correct.
So the public hearing just gets continued?
Is continued.
It is not closed.
Closed.
Not closed, big difference.
Now please vote.
Thank you. Passes by a five zero vote. The continuance passes by a five zero vote.
Item number five, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing on the conditional use permit at the address of 18672 Mesa Drive, permit 2018-06.
Just like the item before us, this item was heard at the CD, Community Development Committee yesterday, with exactly the same result, there was some discussion, residents that showed up. So the, after considerable discussion on this item, the CDC recommended and staff agree, and now are asking that this item also be continued until the CDC meeting in January and subsequently, should that reach a positive conclusion, move it forward to the January city council meeting on January 22nd as well. So just like the past, we would ask for a motion to, to continue the public meeting until January.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Please vote. And this is for the continuance.
Continuance, correct. Five oh, that will be continued.
Thank you. The next hearing is item number six, I'm gonna open the hearing, last hearing for the variance 2018-03 at 18672 Mesa Drive.
This is the same address and this is part of a variance request as opposed to a CUP. And I, I was remiss in reporting that we did receive, I did receive a request, a letter from Leslie Giacobi, who had asked that that be, be recorded in the records, so that will be reflected and shared with everyone as part of the public hearing continuance. But this is exactly the same as the prior, prior item, that would be continued in January. It's part of the, the bigger project, if you will, on 18672 Mesa, which involves basically four variances and two CUPs that will be continued and move forward. Is that right, Ray? Did I get that right?
And just to clarify, there are no public comments with a continuance motion? Just to clarify.
There would be, we, we do not need to take public comment, we would, we would at that time take public comments in the next hearing.
Okay.
But I think if, it would be a discretion, should you want to hear somebody today for whatever reason, extenuating circumstances, you certainly have the ability to do so.
Okay, just wanna make sure that the public has an opportunity to be heard.
The public, most certainly, that's why the, the public hearing remains open and we would have to take public comment in January if this item were on the agenda. But it would definitely be on the, public comments would be available for the CDC meeting or Community Development Meeting in January.
Thank you.
May I?
Please.
I, I know that some of these things have been delayed in, in some ways, are we cognizant of impact to construction? And I'm assuming you guys have talked to the residents and we're not hurting anybody by continuing these things and stopping, delaying their, their building. I just, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful and thoughtful of everybody and I'm sure you guys are and that's why I'm heeding your recommendations, I just, I guess I wanted to hear it.
I want to take everything into account when you, when you look at these things.
Right.
Look at it, some, one of them had a considerable amount of contention yesterday with regards to the design and things of that nature and really needed a lot of work to communicate what was being done and so forth and so on. There was a lot of ask of the, of the public. So, the other one, little less, but still, that we felt like it was best to continue it, give them the opportunity to work through things, any kind of design changes or whatever that needed to happen, work with, would give ample time to work with Ray and things like that, so that there would be a positive outcome for everybody.
Great.
Realizing that, you know, people, people buy in Villa Park, you know, because of the way that lots are situated, you know, we have a beautiful setting here, you know, we, we want to be careful about, very careful about consuming too much of the lot with, with buildings and, and, and taking them too far up and things of that nature, so, you know, trying to keep Villa Park as, as much like it is today is, is our first and foremost obligation, so that's really what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Any further comments? So this one again is a continuance.
Yes, sir.
So unless there's anything further, please go ahead and.
Well, we need a, do we have a motion?
I'll move to continue.
Continue to.
Second.
Yes.
Yep. And please vote. Steve, please read the results.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Thank you. Next item up for discussion is the consent calendar. Now we will consider the consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar for further consideration?
Nope.
Anybody from the public would like to remove any of the consent items? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to approve the balance or all of the consent calendar?
I'll, so moved that we approve all of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Please vote.
That passes by a five zero vote. I would, for the record, I'd just like to point out that item number 12 included the schedule of 2019 city council meetings. That will be posted, based on a positive approval this evening by the city council. That will be on our website later this week, so should anybody be interested, we'll be posting the, the, the calendar dates for our 2019 city council meetings. I just wanted to make that public record.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Hearing number 14, new business. Our first item of new business is the recirculated, excuse me, recirculated draft environmental impact report for the Trails at the Santiago Creek Project. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay, you'll recall that last February, the, the city of Orange published a draft environmental impact report on, basically they called the Trails at San, Santiago Creek, which is a proposed development plan. Basically, the old Sully Miller property, basically. On March 27th, the city council took, took action to basically included, to approve a draft comment letter on the EIR, on the draft EIR. That was submitted to the city of Orange. And then on November 14th, the city of Orange published a recirculated draft, or recirculated EIR. And we are, at this time, the comments are due on that by December 30th, if I'm not correct, I'm not mistaken, I mean. So our consultant here, who has a long history, we engaged him because of his history on this and because of the quick turnaround, so I would turn it over and John, why don't you walk us through real quickly where we are with the revised comments?
Mayor and council, good evening.
Good evening.
The, as the city manager indicated, this, this project that you can see on the screen, what's referred to as the Sully Miller property, it's been a sand and gravel operation for a long time, on the north side of Santiago Canyon Road and to the east of Cannon Street. The, let me just very briefly summarize what the city of Orange is required to do. The California Environmental Quality Act, it's the primary environmental law governing city and county activities in the state. Whenever a project would potentially have a significant impact on the environment, they're required to prepare and circulate an environmental impact report. So as Steve indicated, earlier this year, they circulated a draft environmental impact report, they took comments on that, city of Villa Park submitted comments, and now they've revised the environmental impact report to reflect any changes that have been made to the project and also to respond to the comments that they've received. So, that revised draft environmental impact report was published and I worked with city staff to take a look at it, particularly to see if they responded adequately to the previous comments that Villa Park submitted earlier in the year. And so what's attached to your staff report is a detailed table itemizing questions that we still have, that we would like to see answers to. The way this process works is, city of Orange, which is called the lead agency under SEQA, before they can take action to approve the project, they have to certify the environmental impact report. And as part of that process, they have to explain why they choose to approve a project if it would have significant environmental impacts. And they also have to give a detailed response to comments from other public agencies such as the Villa Park. So, that's kind of the, the quick summary. What we focused on in our review is the traffic impacts. The environmental impact report is required to look at all phases of the project, which includes the construction operations as well as the ongoing, long-term traffic impacts after the homes are built. And so one of the biggest concerns that we have is the construction phase of this project. And this is kind of an unusual project because of the nature of the sand and gravel operations. And I could just cite one statistic that might give you the, the gravity of the situation. The city's environmental, city of Orange environmental impact report estimates that it would take about 275,000 heavy truck trips during the course of site preparation, which is excavation, recompaction, and so forth. One of the biggest concerns that we have is where are those truck trips going to go? Environmental impact report says that the main access to this property is from the 55 freeway through Villa Park and also to the east out to the toll road, Santiago Canyon Road. But the environmental impact report does not analyze the impacts on Villa Park. Their study area is packed tightly around the project and doesn't include impacts on our streets. So, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions. What we're asking for is your direction and authorization to submit this letter with any revisions that you would like to see in it. Thank you.
Um, mayor?
Well, means.
You've been a planner for well over 30 years and you know what environmental impact reports are and so do I, but I think there are a number of people that are either watching at home or on, here in this room that don't really understand what an environmental impact report is. They've heard the word and so forth, but could you describe what it is, you know, that includes a project description, identification of onsite and offsite impacts and mitigation, you know, if you could give a thumbnail description of what an EIR, environmental impact report really is, what it's intended to do?
Sure. In a nutshell, environmental impact report is supposed to disclose to the public and to decision-makers what the environmental effects of a project would be. And as part of that, the EIR has to describe the project in great detail, the construction phase, the final layout of the project, and there's maybe 16 or 18 different topics that are addressed in environmental impact, everything from aesthetics to air quality to land use compatibility to traffic and so forth. One of the key aspects of, of SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, is that if the project could have a significant impact on the environment, then the city that's considering it is obligated to adopt what's called mitigation measures, to minimize those impacts to the greatest extent that it's feasible. And in many cases, a large, large project, it's not possible to fully mitigate all of the impacts. So if the city of Orange wants to approve the project even though it might have a significant environmental impacts, they're required to explain in detail the reasons why they think it's, it's, it's their decision to approve the project even though it would have significant environmental impacts. Would you like me to go into any more detail on any other aspect of that?
Oh, just enough so that everybody who's considering this project understands, you know, what's involved here and.
Sure.
What the object of this draft environmental impact report is.
Yes.
Well, one of the questions I had is, most of the comments that are in here are traffic-related? Are there other environmental considerations? I mean, they're taking what, 500,000 cubic yards of something out of the ground? Where are they putting it and what impact is that gonna have where it's going and how does it? And how does that impact us as they excavate that? Are there other environmental conditions here that we should be taking into consideration besides just the trucks running back and forth up and down the street?
I think—and I—John, what we really focused on was the impact to Villa Park with respect, and that was dictated largely by what we previously sent as comments to the draft EIR. And candidly, that's—in within our—you know, what they've removed is—that's an issue, you're right, but that's out of sort of our sphere of influence. The issue is it's traveling through our city, and that's our concern. So where our focus is what's not necessarily being taken in, put out, or added, and how many homes or whatever, but the impact traffic-wise that it's going to create. Because it's out of our jurisdiction as far as some of the—some of the—
No, I agree with that. I'm just—we have neighbors in Villa Park that are a stone's throw from where this is, and I just want to make sure that we've—are there—I want to understand, in case someone asked the question, are there other things that we should be considering besides just the trucks running up and down Villa Park Road? I get that.
Yeah.
I just didn't see anything outside of that, because we talk about environmental impact in this report. So that's the only reason I question it.
Yeah, the EIR does address that, but it largely—it's a number of houses and the number of units and type of thing is what is in there. And we didn't go into specific discussions regarding how many units we put there, correct?
Right, they're proposing, I believe, 128 homes on that property. And yes, there—you're absolutely right, there are other sorts of impacts. Some of those are directly rated—related to the traffic, such as air quality, emissions from the trucks, noise from the trucks, vibration from the trucks. So, yes, we've—I was asked to focus on the city's previous comments and to see whether those had been addressed. But yes, there absolutely, there are a variety.
Eventually, it's going to be 200 or 300 cars. As a result of that, it's going to be traveling—
Yes.
—down this road and—
Yes.
—you know, up Cannon and all over the—I mean, there's more than just the initial construction, to me, involved in what we should be looking at, I think. I don't know, I'm not—
Absolutely, and one of our— One of our comments is that the environmental impact report does not analyze traffic impacts—the long-term traffic impacts in the City of Villa Park. It only analyzes a tight area around this project outside of Villa Park.
I have a question. When was the data—what year was the data provided? When was it gathered? Was this 2010? Was this 2018 that we examined? Or that they provided, excuse me? Forgive me.
I would have to go back to look at the EIR to see the date. My recollection is that it was a couple of years ago. Maybe as much as five, six years ago.
Okay.
May I comment? So I understand EIRs, I just want to say thank you, because in reading all the comments, I really felt like you addressed specific to Villa Park, and you were very aware of what it was lacking and how it related from the traffic and the noise and wear and tear. So I appreciate that, thank you. It really looked like—I mean, you honed in and pointed out—almost made me feel like Orange kind of completely forgot about us and the repercussions of them going back and forth, so thank you.
And the other question I have is, do you have, at any given time, the ability to go back and amend questioning—questions or comments or whatever to this? Or is this, once you're done, you're done?
I would—I would say that there is a very set process laid out by the law, and so agencies like Villa Park have until the end of the month to submit a comment on this draft environmental impact report. Then, Orange is required to submit a—prepare a response to our comments and everyone else's comments and provide that to us at least 10 days before they approve the EIR, certify the EIR. So at that point, that 10-day window, I suppose, we would need to look at those responses quickly and in detail, and if Villa Park had concerns about those responses, we could express those to the City of Orange quickly.
Go ahead.
Several months ago, we submitted comments on the previous draft of the EIR, and a number of the comments that you've provided restate previous comments. How has the project proponent or the lead agency responded to the previous comments?
My opinion is that they weren't very well addressed.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for us to ask where the waste material—I agree with Councilman Pitts—would it be appropriate for us to ask where is the waste material going to be shipped off to? And also, where is the fill material going to come from?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask that?
Yes, and it was my intention to put those questions in—I'll double-check to make sure that those explicit questions are in there.
Particularly considering that the project is entirely in Orange and there are routes—I presume that they might be taking the waste material perhaps to the B Canyon landfill or the Frank Bowerman landfill and importing material maybe from Corona. Those are the two most likely alternatives I can identify. And if those were—if that was true, then there are routes that can be maintained going through Orange and not through Villa Park at all. Could we ask them to identify alternative haul routes and mitigate any impacts that may occur on Orange if they run a truck through—or that may be on Villa Park, should they run a truck through Villa Park?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Any further comment by council? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item?
We received three—three blue slips, and I'll call them in order of receipt. Peter Jaclyn?
Good evening, Merry Christmas.
Good evening, sir, Merry Christmas.
Peter Jaclyn, I'm a 45-year resident of Orange Park Acres. Lived not too far from the site. I want to give you a little broader view on this property. There are several factors on this property that a lot of people believe are not mitigatable.
Not what?
Not mitigatable.
Mitigatable, okay.
On the west end of the property, we have the old Villa Park landfill. That's quite a methane producer. We believe there's methane seeping onto this property. We believe there's methane on this property other than the Villa Park site—from decomposed material that's been there for a number of years, green waste, metal waste, other things. There are two faults that run near this property and a third one that runs down the west side. The property has a number of regulatory agencies that oversee it. One is the State Mining Group. The property in state law is defined as an area of regional significance, which means it has enough sand and gravel potential to be important to the economy in Southern California. The area in state law runs from the Villa Park Dam, which is just east of the property, all the way down to the 55 freeway. Under that law, it appears that this—this mountain of dirt and debris that's been put on—and I'm sure you've all seen it, this is nothing new to any of you, right? It appears under state law that it's illegal to have that dump there. That has not been addressed in the DEIR at all in a reasonable manner. We have on the east side the Villa Park Dam, which is something like 70, 80 years old. It has a fault underneath it also. So when you look at all these things, there are seven or eight items here that are mitig— that are—should be mitigated. It's unlikely that they can all be mitigated at a reasonable cost. The real danger on this property, in my mind, is if it is developed, there's a serious danger of family fortunes being lost. There's a serious danger of health because of the methane gases. I urge you to look at this thing in broader detail. Transportation, traffic is a serious problem in the area, but these other problems, I think, are far more serious and deserve far more attention. I urge you folks to use whatever influence you have to get this project stopped. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Teresa Sears?
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here. I have spent many nights at this chambers several years ago, but I appreciate the opportunity today, and congratulations to any of you that just got your seats and those that retained them. I have been involved—I live in Orange, I've been there for 28 years. I've been involved in regional issues for 25 years, land use primarily, and I have also been involved in the Sully Miller property since 1999. The Villa Park Council and the citizens here in the late 90s, early 2000s, they were—the ones that were very supportive of barm ranch and preserving that, and I was responsible, one of the founders of that group that we ultimately saved, that's now part of a regional park system, Santiago Oaks Park. So the draft EIR, which is a recirculated draft actually, and the reason it's recirculated is because the original that was produced in February was flawed. I believe it was fatally flawed, and so it couldn't really be certified and it needed to be recirculated. So that's sort of why we're doing this again. The site is complicated. It is a very complicated site, and that is one of the reasons why nothing has been built. This time, it's called Trails of Santiago, and many will recall that in 2003, the Fieldstone Project—that project was rescinded by the city council because citizens did a referendum, a successful referendum. 2014, the project was denied by council, Rio Santiago, and that was—that was denied because you couldn't certify the EIR and everything else fell apart. This project, right now, is all about getting a zone change. Every major decision on this project is deferred. Not much—much has changed over the years. The creek still runs through the northeast portion. The former landfill is still adjacent to it. It still emits gas, methane. There are health and safety issues such as the dam inundation, the methane, the wildfires, the earthquakes, the liquefaction. All of these issues are significant and they are unavoidable. So that's just laying the groundwork. And then secondarily, there is no reclamation plan for the sand and gravel operation, which is required by state law of the SMARA Act that was in effect in 1976. There's been a lot of issues about that. So by way of background, 12 acres are zoned, R184 residential, which is on the north side of the creek, which was done on a tentative tract map in 1993. The remaining 98 acres have been designated for over 45 years as open space on four major plans. Okay? The OPA Plan, the Santa Ana River Plan, the Greenbelt Plan, the East Orange Plan, and then the implementation of the Santiago Creek Plan. All those designated the site open space. Citizens from Orange, Villa Park, and throughout the whole county, they're the ones that carefully crafted these plans. Now, the City of Villa Park invested in that, and the City of Villa Park also adopted the Greenbelt Plan. So in 1999, specifically on November 17th, a letter was sent from the City of Villa Park by Bob Bell, your mayor at the time, outlining one of the issues. He said in the letter, "Santiago Creek Greenbelt Plan. It is requested that the proposed development be consistent with the regional Greenbelt Plan for Santiago Creek. This plan has been previously adopted by the cities of Orange, Villa Park, and the counties of Orange." So my suggestion is that go into the letter if you so deem. So Milan is trying—the owner is trying to get, as we have said earlier, 128 units. Those proposals would be inconsistent with the OPA-specific plan, the East Orange, and all the Greenbelt plans. There—it's inconsistent. The project as proposed is an extremely—with set a precedent in Orange and Orange Park Acres. The city is not obligated to approve bad projects, and the city should not be exposing taxpayers to unnecessary liabilities. So a general plan amendment, these are legislative actions. They're at the discretion of the council. The council can simply say no. There is no reasoning that they need to say why they disapprove. Not one plan in the City of Orange has ever identified this project where they're proposing for residential. And the Orange general plan does not promote ever-changing open space to residential. Zone changes are discretionary as well. As we talked earlier, there is an extreme taxpayer liability, as Peter talked about. You've talked about traffic, I told you a little bit about the greenway, the open space. One of the big factors here is your—98 acres is designated open space, and they're trying to say that they're going to be giving 60. So if you do the math, 98, 60, it's not—there's a loss. But more than that, who is going to take care of that open space? The City of Orange will not take it. It is not a candidate for the HOA, and the county would be the logical recipient. The problem with that is the county does not take liabilities because there is no reclamation plan, and I would think if the county ever considered it, it would have to be under the supervision of the state, which would get back to the State Mining Act, before they could ever be confident that this land is even valuable for the regional park system. You have mining issues, you have grading issues, you have air quality issues, as I said, all deferred, and then you have all the public safety I told you about earlier. So I just want to say, in closing, I'm available for any questions, comments, to meet later, coffee, what have you. I know the site well, and I have been involved in it for, like I said, all of the projects. I have read this EIR, and for me—for me, the recirculated draft is—it is inadequate. I don't see how it could be certified, and as it stands now, the project I could not support. So I recommend anyone in Villa Park, please send your letters into the City of Orange. They are due by the 31st, and your—your city manager can provide the email address for that. And this is not just about traffic or a lot of cars coming through Villa Park. This is actually a regional issue that will impact all of us going forward. So I do appreciate the opportunity tonight, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Laura Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Laura Thomas. I'm—I live in Orange Park Acres, so I hail from your—the neighborhood here. I've lived there for 36 years. I am a past Orange Park Association member, have served as president part of that time, but I've been on the association for 18 years total, two terms and nine, and that. I want to ditto both Peter Jaclyn's comments and Teresa's. They have researched and so knowledgeable about the detail. I'm not quite as technical about that. But I wanted to say that I appreciate Villa Park taking a look at this, and I know that impact on the traffic. Where I live, I back to Santiago Canyon, always known as right by Dead Man's Curve, and that—so that's where that new median is. And we don't know where that traffic has come from, but it is backed up all the way to Albertson's and Jamboree at night and that, and I just see it sit, sit, sit out there. So that impact is already here for us. I'd like to just go back and say, this is deja vu with the developer. You know, he started in 2005 buying Ridgeline, and we went down that path for a long time with him. And I look at what has happened and the activities and the plans that they have used to try to get the project through many times, and they have not been a good neighbor, if you will. And so as we have come to, and I'll just jump to that Rio Santiago project, that particular EIR and that—that was before the planning commission, they unanimously turned that down, they could not ratify it. And I'll just quote you from two expert planning commissioners who, like John here with his expertise, that's what they do, and that's what they know and how to interpret these. One planning commissioner said, "In EIRs, maybe there's one or two things that can't be mitigated." This one has eight, eight things that cannot be mitigated. This recirculated EIR is a mirror of what was there. Maybe the words have changed a little, but it is still the same. The Sully Miller land has not changed, it's the same. Maybe the dirt's a little higher over there right now. So that was one planning commissioner's comment. The second planning commissioner said, "The City of Orange has a liability and a responsibility to not send a resident on an unscheduled trip to the ocean." And that is referring to the flood—the flood opportunity that has been there in the past and has potentially and can reoccur. So I would just ask that, thank you again for looking at this and giving input and your comments. Besides the traffic, it is a public safety issue, we all experienced that fire last year. Excuse me. One resident told me it took him an hour to get from Meads in Santiago Canyon to the 55 freeway in that emergency disaster that went. So, you know, having that layer over Orange Park Acres, and I know impacted Villa Park too, this is something that we really have to look at for the public safety of additional impact of traffic and that. And besides that, it doesn't consistently work with the Orange Park Acres specific plan of one acre. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything further, Steve?
That's the last of the public comments.
I would like to reopen this for additional council member comments if there are any, I'm going to go ahead and make a few. First, I want to thank John for your efforts, and Ray, and the rest of staff, and also council member Kalakite, who I know has read the thousand-page document, spent a great deal of time, and bent my ear about this, and raised some concerns, and I spent some time reading it myself. The truckloads are, by just sheer number, are frightening. The volume of debris that they're talking about bringing in and out of there without really a plan to deal with it, and to keep it from coming right through the heart of our city, in a sense. I have all sorts of infrastructure concerns, I have all sorts of safety concerns. The traffic right now on Villa Park Road, Santiago Cannon, is virtually untenable between 3:00 and 6:00 as you come down from OPA and turn right on a cannon. And although there's not a significant and large appreciable amount of residents that may, are being planned to go in there, the fact you're adding more on top of a problem that is a parking lot is frightening. Obviously, some folks have spent a great deal of time researching this, and I don't know if all the issues have been necessarily considered by the EIR, and that in and of itself is troubling. The methane issue is really serious, if that is in fact true. And I don't pretend to be a scientist, but I would just caution everybody on that, and please include that in our responses, and I would like to invite any further comments or discussion on this matter. I think it's very important.
I have a question, if I may, to John. The methane piques my interest. Have they done a study on parts per million and what it's running over there?
I can't specifically respond to that because I didn't look at it.
Can we include that?
Yes.
So that we can find, I mean, methane is an inert gas, and when mixed with oxygen it's fine, but it can be toxic if it's, you know, contact with the skin, but it would be a good idea to know exact, that piqued my interest when it was brought up. I think it's important to know kind of, you know, what are we looking at? Is it, you know, a low part per million, is it high?
Right, where are we at?
That's why I brought it up earlier, about this morning, traffic.
Yeah.
I do have some information on that. The, I think it was about 20 years ago or 25 years ago, there was offsite migration of methane from that old landfill, and that's from the, that landfill exists from the west boundary of this proposed project to, I guess it's Cannon Road, you know, and the bridge. The offsite migration actually resulted in explosive levels at the fire station, so they had to close the fire station for a short period of time, this is like 20, 25 years ago. And since the, at that time, the Orange County Solid Waste, or let's see, Integrated Waste Management Agency implemented a very aggressive methane extraction system, and that's what you see out there, you'll see that there's a number of pods out there, and that's all a vacuum extraction system. So they would be the experts to tell, you know, what is the situation with methane out there, and that could be something that we could ask them to address in the EIR, in terms of, you know, what are the, what are the potential impacts, and how is the methane being mitigated, and will it continue to be mitigated reliably in the future?
Oh, air quality thing.
Yeah, well, they should have studies and show, you know, comparable data.
Well, actually, it was a fire hazard, or explosive hazard, at one point.
Anything further? Chad, you had something?
So, given the context and the concern, I realize this is a response to an EIR, is there some other action that we've considered, a letter, something else?
I think, just for clarification, like John said, this is legally prescribed process. So the city is, city of Orange is going through that process. So the appropriate process at this time would be to us to submit our comments, and as the city go on record. I think that's it. So for practical purposes, and while I don't want to speak, and should this not be, should our, the final EIR be approved and not reflect a satisfactory mitigation, we need to establish very candidly, a trail of raising those concerns for potential litigation. So we need to exercise this process in the legally prescribed manner. And they understand, trust me, the developer understands the process, they know what the potential implications of not addressing concerns are, and EIRs are challenged legally on a very regular basis. But that's sort of down the road, the process, and should that be the case, that is potentially an option the city could pursue, or any other party can pursue. It's not just the city of Villa Park, but other elements can do, and I think Teresa Sears in her comments indicated that there was a referendum in the past on one of the, she hasn't left, there was a referendum on an EIR issue. So I think at this point in time, the appropriate action by the city is to provide comments within the prescribed timeframe, which is December 31st.
Thanks for the clarification.
Is that John, is that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I think it can be described as speak now or forever hold your peace. But yeah, we need to identify what our concerns are now. One of my questions is, and I've gotten different responses over the past number of months that we've been looking at this, is there in fact a reclamation plan? Has it been developed? If there is no reclamation plan, when will there be such a reclamation plan? And is that something we can, in our comments, reasonably ask the city of Orange to provide is, you know, what the plans are to develop a reclamation plan? Because we'd like to know, how might that implementation of that reclamation plan impact Villa Park? And just for those who don't know, a reclamation plan is required whenever you have a sand and gravel mine, for example, or any other kind of a mine, you have to develop a, in California, you have to develop a reclamation plan. In other words, how are you going to restore the site so that it's not just an ugly scar in the ground in perpetuity, but what are you going to do to kind of fix it up, you know, revegetate it or whatever, to make it fit in with the surroundings?
We could certainly add that into that, that's absolutely no problem. Teresa, is Teresa here? I can't see, oh Teresa, I don't think Teresa's indicated to me that they have approved a satisfactory reclamation plan at this point. There is no plan. So that would be something that we can add to the comments, and they would have to address. Well, we believe they would have to address it, whether they do is obviously subject to what they choose to do. But that's something certainly we can add in there and add that on to the comments with direction from the council.
Yeah, irrespective of whether they build the project or not, at some point in time, they're going to have to implement a reclamation plan on that site.
Indeed.
But the other thing, there were a lot of good points brought up by several people here tonight, and I think worthy of, you know, having a viewpoint in the EIR when we submit our comments back, as it relates to some of those other things that, you know, that were brought up. Okay, I heard methane and reclamation. Well, I also heard faults, you know, the chance for earthquake, what happens with that, you know? You've got the dam sitting up there, if they have an earthquake and something's caused by this area, what happens to the residents of Villa Park? That kind of stuff. You know, I heard there's some state mining problems there.
That would be right, reclamation.
I just, I'm asking you to expand it beyond what I read, which seems to be all about traffic. You know, the air quality, there's several things to take into consideration when we look at this. I mean, obviously, we've got the expert here, I mean, and the other folks that are, we have access to to do that. I'm not an expert by any means, but I just want to make sure we cover off on everything that we can.
Certainly, we can, we'll make sure that we include and incorporate those items into there.
Thank you. Anything further?
So I guess we would need direction from you tonight, that we would take the draft that we have and add those elements on top of that, and get it submitted to the city of Orange by the December 30th timeframe. So that would be my recommended motion if someone were to make it, and so.
I think we can, I'll make.
I'll second.
Okay, is that?
Yes.
Anna?
Okay.
Vote needed?
There would be a vote needed, yes, and.
Please, please vote on that, then. Steve, if you'd read the results.
Pass is 5-0.
Thank you. Item 15, city manager report information from the city manager and/or city staff.
Okay, hold on, let me, you guys are moving fast tonight. Okay, item number 15 is the monthly report that I provide. What you'll see is a little different, as you see on the computer, you see it. What I've done is removed those items, we're completed under the tenure of the previous city council. So you are just seeing items that are pending that are on our list. Any item that is new and red is something that's been added since the last city council meeting. So I'm available to answer any questions, should you be interested in the item either tonight or at any time in the future, myself and my staff are available.
Council members, any questions, comments? Anybody from the public, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward.
There's no vote required on that item, so.
Moving on to mayor and council member matters, item 16.
Item 16 was requested by Mayor Rossini and Mayor Protem Pitts, requested that we place an item on the agenda for the city council to discuss the, basically, the increasing budget that, increasing expenditures related to travel, specifically by the city council. And those expenditures have been, you know, sort of increasing, there's been, there is a city policy, but the city has sort of moved around, the council moved around a little bit in the past, where it was a certain amount budget for each council member, but they sort of, over about a year, year and a half ago, there was sort of a movement to, well, pool it, if you will, in other words, if one was underspending, the others could easily spend it. So I think that was sort of what's there. So I would defer to the two council members who asked the item, but basically, we're prepared to help answer any questions.
Well, I, in particular, brought this item, and I appreciate Robbie co-sponsoring this with me. Take a look at the budget, the professional development category on page 80, I noted that over a period of years, it seems like we're ticking up in our professional development expenditures, and by and large, I think they're all valuable and potentially necessary for the city. I'm just concerned about how far our voice is traveling, given the expenditure, kind of a cost-benefit analysis, and I want us to have an open and honest discussion about this. I certainly have some ideas and suggestions, but candidly, I think it's important that I hear from my colleagues first, our new colleagues as well as our seasoned colleagues, and see what their thoughts are about this. I'd like to open it.
I'll start. I'm really glad you put this on. I asked Steve for the travel policy, and in reading it, eventually, I'm going to make the motion that we start following this again, but I do not care for the idea of pooling money, that if someone's traveling more or less. I think we can all agree that staying under budget would be a good goal.
Absolutely.
I understand that, I think our expense, travel expense for development awareness is $18,500. If we were to, I believe, a couple years ago, before my time on council, but I believe it was $3,500 for each council member, but 45 for mayor for expenses. I'm a firm believer in staying within your budget, living within your means, we're a small city, I think we need to live within our means. I'm not opposed if somebody can't go or attend and has funds, that it get brought to council, and the five of us decide and agree if that person is to go ahead and go. Not just an open, let's pool it all together, and I wasted my, you know, $3,500, but I still want to go somewhere, and you offer it, I don't think that should work. We need to have a very prescribed discussion about it, and if it's really necessary, I mean, I was looking at some of the past ones, and there was stuff about water management or something, and we have a water board. I don't think we need to attend anything that's dealing with water, to be honest with you. So I really think we need to go back to the 35, 35, 45, and the policy states that conference meetings requiring hotel accommodations and associated meals shall be attended at city expense only with prior specific approval of the city council unless already budgeted, and none of these events, like the League of Cities or the ACCOC, none of those are prior budgeted. So every time we wanted to go to something, I think it needs to come to council, and we need to decide if it's a benefit for us to attend. We can't just say, "I want to go," I just don't think that's putting the city's best interest.
Anybody else? Chad?
So I also noticed the budget, it was one of those things when I was looking at the 2012 budget versus the current budget, and looking at city council expenses, it was, it was a big difference, there was $5,800 and then $58,000, and I was blown away. So anything that we can do to trim those expenses, to go through and figure out how we can, that's just city council, that's just council members spending money, anything we can do to stop that, I'm all in favor. I like the idea of talking about the things that we're going to do, I see that there's benefit in thinking about, you know, strategically sending a member to something, not sending more than one member if we don't need to, and then, you know, if somebody goes and does something and then brings it back to the council, we all get the benefit out of it, and we've only spent once. There's really good ways of streamlining and better spending our money, so I'm all in favor of that.
Can I add something to that? So let me, I agree with Councilman Zimmerman, but also, I'm not trying to suggest that it gets micromanaged, any travel expense that has, that we want to attend outside of LA, Orange, or Riverside County, that's where I think we need to bring it to council. It's not if there's a reception at Anaheim or something, it's, you know, where it involves travel, and you have to decide if you're willing to spend that for your budget. So for instance, right now, I'm slated to do that Washington DC trip, and then some mandatory training with the, you know, the League of Cities. And that puts me, if we go with the 3,500, that puts me at 52.8% of my budget, which means that I have to work with 48% left if I want to attend anything, and I think it's, ownership is on us to be able to watch that, nobody polices us, there's no oversight for us. So I think we need to get back in recognizing that we serve the residents, and staying under budget, I just think if we pool it, then it just gives the impression that we can use money we really don't need to use.
You know, the great thing about working with a team, if you don't care who gets the glory, you got two people that say exactly what you were thinking, and you don't have to say anything, "Thank you." That is wisdom, right there. That is ownership of your own budget, that is responsibility to the residents, I couldn't have said it better. Thank you. Bob, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to suggest that we, I'm not sure that travel out of state, considering the small size of our city and, you know, what influence we might have, I think it needs to have greater exposure, at least to approval. I'd like to suggest that if we revise the travel policy, that we require all out of state travel by council be agendized for approval by the council. And the request should identify the purpose, the estimate of the total cost, the benefit to the city, and alternatives to this purpose. Another suggestion or suggested revision I'd like to see is that we require travel for training be at the closest and least expensive location. For example, if we have training that's available locally, that we not travel out of the area to obtain travel, so.
I concur, I think that's a really good idea, saving the travel cost. If the event fee is the same, it is what it is, but at least we save on the travel and lodging.
Yeah.
And again, And again, that's not into the gritty, gritty, mighty managing side, that's just, I think, common sense.
Yeah.
So, as far as traveling out of state, I don't know. That's a, that's a difficult question. I'd like, Robbie, you have something to say on that?
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments. I mean, I agree with some of the things that you all brought up here. I mean, when I first got on council, I was told that I had X, X amount to spend. I lived within those, those means. I used it as, as a networking opportunity to expand our sphere of influence with other cities that surround our area here. I also, and I think all of us will find that the new council members, like we were at one time, and Bob was at one time, have different degrees of learning that we have to go through, and, and, and they're going to spend a little bit more money in the beginning with learning as opposed to us. We might be spending more networking and, and, and learning other things as it relates to that. But I'm in a complete agreement with, okay, what is it, thirty-five, thirty-five, forty-five, whatever it is, and I think we spend it within our means. I want to caution and be careful that we don't clog up our agendas approving travel. That, that's my only thing. I think we're all grownups, and, and I think we just, you know, we manage it, we look at the budget every month, we, you know, as part of our, as part of this, if you want to pull something and say something, do so.
Yeah.
But I, I just, I, I want to caution you about, I appreciate the oversight and the, and the review of things, but we're all grownups here. We, you know, it's, it's, we were elected to take care of millions of dollars for this city, so just caution you about doing those kinds of things. But we also, we also voted on trip reports, and I haven't seen too many trip reports written for all these out-of-state trips and other things that transpired. So we're, we're not, we're not doing a good job of following the process, all of us, right now. So I think whatever the process is, we follow it, and, and, but, let's have some leeway in terms of, you get money, spend it wisely, and if you can come under.
And report on it.
Come under.
Well, so, Steve, would you be able to please send the rest of City Council that travel policy?
Yes.
And, and also listen there, per diem amount, you know, I, I just, that's how I used to travel. We had a per diem amount, and if you went over, it was, you ate it. So I think we need to get back, I like policies, sorry.
And, Steve?
I like following policies.
Just for clarification, alcoholic beverages of that nature, is that covered?
Alcohol is not a reimbursable expense.
Good, thank you.
It's not, okay, good.
Okay, good.
At least, it's not by policy. The council can decide that they want to reimburse it, but I, I don't believe that's something that.
There's no need for that.
We would certainly recommend. We would not recommend.
Is it part of our policy now, or do we need to add that in?
It is part of our policy at this point.
So can I make a motion then to move forward with each council person maintaining their own budget of thirty-five hundred, except for the mayor gets forty-five hundred, and any travel outside of LA, Orange, Riverside County should be brought to council for approval?
I'll second that.
Would you include San Diego County?
Are you staying the night? No, I think, I think anything outside of.
Well, there's mileage, there's, there's other things that are considered, there's, you know, parking, mileage, all different kinds of things associated with the events, you know, Ubers, all kinds of things. So just, you've got a certain amount of money to spend, don't spend it if you don't need to.
Yeah, no, I, I want to stick with the Orange, LA, and Riverside.
So, so just for clarification, because, you know, it's, it's difficult for staff to try and enforce and tell a councilman they can't do something or whatever. Really clear on the record that there is the thirty-five hundred limit per, and items out of that area are coming to the council, even if it's within that thirty-five hundred?
I don't agree with that.
I, I, that's, that's, I'm just asking for clarification.
I'd like us to all be on one page here, even if it takes a little bit more discussion about this, if at all possible. Robbie, I think you're making some points there, and, and, you know, I, I, I understand where Crystal's going with this, but I'm, I'm concerned about cutting this a little thin. San Diego's an hour away, LA's an hour away.
She's made a decision to go to Washington DC, and it's within her, her budget, and she knows that she's got forty-eight percent left to spend on other events.
But I'm paying for my own flight.
Okay.
So, just FYI, so, so.
That's your choice.
Right, so with my budget, so that I can take opportunities down the road, there are expenses that I'm willing to cover myself. But back to what Steve was saying, I think that, because I, I don't want to see us, if it's within our budget, if I don't need to, if we don't need to send somebody somewhere, it's still the city money. I don't think that, for instance, this, I think there was something that we got on some event for Yosemite that was just recently sent, and I don't know if that really behooves us to be there, and if it's within our, but, that's, so, back to your question, just because I have the funds in my budget, doesn't mean I should go. So yes, I think that even if it's within the thirty-five hundred dollars, if it requires travel outside of Orange, LA, and Riverside County, it needs to come to council for decision. I don't, because if somebody has the funds and they want to go to Yosemite, I don't think it's in the city's best interest to spend money for an event that we won't benefit from.
Council members?
So I guess the only other comment that I heard Steve make that I, I'm referring back to on this too, is that the staff doesn't have any ability to stop any of us from traveling anywhere. And in some cases, maybe they should, or there should be a check on that to say, okay, well, now the council member's going to this thing, and that doesn't really make sense. Why, why are we doing that? And that's where I would, that's where I think Crystal's getting back to, we should bring it to the council, and the five of us should talk about, yes, we should go to that or shouldn't go to that. The saying it's out of these particular counties is one way of doing that, but maybe it's more of a, like, what's the trigger that says that's suspect? Well, how do we define what we can't, should or shouldn't be going to? Is there a list of things that, oh yeah, these are all good to go to, you can choose from these, or, and maybe it's, oh, you've already been to this one before, you've been twice, you don't need to go to this thing again, and we should stop that, or, you know, like, how do we?
Rotate that around, so other council members learn from whatever training that is, so that it's not just one individual. Because I think all of us getting trained to a certain degree in different disciplines benefits and behooves the city, so long as there's genuine interest there and not just travel interest.
So.
I'm being, I'm being penalized because people didn't know how to spend, didn't know how to manage the money. That's basically what we're saying.
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, we've got to sit here and, and put on council agendas because people don't know how to spend money.
Um.
And, and all I'm saying is, I underspent my budgets. I knew exactly what I needed to do, and I wasn't about to go overspend on frivolous things that I didn't need to go attend. I can tell you, I know for a fact that things were done in previous councils by people who went to things that, one, they shouldn't have gone to, number two, they went to things and, and it costed us money, and they didn't stay the entire time and could have gone for less money. So we, we've got to be a little bit more prudent. You can't manage that by bringing it to council.
How do you stop that?
We all have to be physically responsible and do this the right way. Now, if it gets out of hand, we'll bring it forward to council, we'll talk about it. But to have it on every agenda about where somebody's going to travel, I just think is, I don't know.
Well, my concern is, because I have last year's data, and this is where everybody did the pooling, and the budget was eighteen-five, and went over budget by one thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars. There was one council person that spent forty-seven percent of that, another council person that spent thirty-one percent of that, and then the other three council members were well below twenty percent. So that's why I'm bringing it up, because I don't want another situation like that. So I just, I go back, so I, I agree, it doesn't have to be, you know, I don't want to waste time on every agenda, putting on who's going where. That's why I said if it's outside of those three counties, we have to police ourselves. I don't want to put a, a burden on staff. There's no oversight for us. Doesn't appear that the councils have been in the past following, following the travel policy, so yeah, that leaves us. We have to be our own oversight, and the only way to do that is to start saying if there's an event that we get notified of that's outside of the three counties, it comes to council. Who's going, do we need to go? Yes, no? I have money, I don't have money, or we really need to go, but I'm the only one that can, or Chad's the only one that can. I just think, just, we need to start being much more fiduciary, responsible with the city money.
Steve, and, and I want to hear Mayor Protem Pitts's concerns out here. Would you have an estimate, idea, what involvement, what layer, what additional level of time or staff resources or council time, could you possibly estimate how many times a year that would, we would be in that situation?
Well, candidly, the way it's sort of evolved is that my staff have had to make flight arrangements, et cetera, and, and they're doing that, and if there's cancellations or trains or whatever. So it, it's going to vary on a case-by-case basis, and I don't, I, I can't put a, a dollar figure on how much time it is, because you may have one event, three of you going, and you may have three different flight schedules, and so somebody has to explore that, or different coming and going, or whatever. There may be a basic fee for the conference or whatever that's paid for upfront, that's, that's fairly easy to handle. But it's the, it's the other thing that's sort of, that's sort of the making travel arrangements. So, so candidly, I would like to suggest that if you are budgeted for a certain amount, I don't know that we're staff to do, make travel arrangements. We're not a travel agency, my staff isn't. We don't have your schedules, and frequently, that entails my staff having to call you, say, well, can you make a one o'clock flight on that day? Does that get you back on time? And that's just not really a good use, I believe, of the limited number of staff resources I have. So as part of this policy, I would recommend that you live within your own resources and make your own reimbursement, and make your own schedules and, and arrangements, and then seek reimbursement from the city with appropriate documentation.
I agree with that.
Tickets, airline, whatever it may be, and receipts from dinner or whatever the case may be. You know, we, we don't.
I do that at work today.
Yeah.
I do that at work today. I make my own flight arrangements, I make my own hotel arrangements, all of it.
You must work in the private sector.
I do.
Well, that's kind of why I ended up paying, I was like, well, I'll just make my own flight. So I would never have dreamed having someone else make my flight.
So, so one of the ways that we have.
Fortunately, she does.
One of the ways that Tui has suggested, and Frank, we bounce our idea around, is that we can issue a, a credit card to each one of you, separate, pre-approved, a certain dollar amount limit or something, that you can make and put arrangements. If you don't want to wait for, you know, the, the city picks up those, so it's not like it's coming, you have to pay it and we get reimbursed. But we have a record of what actually is happening and going on, so there'd be very accountable, and we can have those, those will be reviewed before they're paid. So we can do that. So we could, that's one of the ways we're kind of exploring and, and sort of pursuing as, as an option, so.
That's more work on Frank.
Yeah, I was going to say, is, is, is your staff on board with that?
Well, it's not actually any less work than following and processing a, a claim for reimbursement, because we have to go through that now and get re, get receipts, et cetera. So I, I'm just saying, we can do it a number of different ways, we're exploring it, we haven't totally locked into that's maybe the best, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of ways to do it. My personal preference is if we can remove so that we don't do your travel arrangements, there's the victory for staff right there. And, and I'll take, I know Tui's time is like, well, I got three different flights going to this, whatever, or three different, even, even if it's only Sacramento, you know, you can be hourly at different times to Sacramento from different airports, because if somebody might be working in some area, whatever. So that would be part of my hope that we can get here tonight, is some direction from the council that, that we do move in that direction, and if we explore something about maybe doing something, we can come back to you, but we'd have to come back with the credit card or something kind of concept, but that would be, that would remove a lot of the, the issues of travel for staff.
Well, I think out of an abundance of further investigation and caution, maybe we continue this item, a meeting, and live within our means. The whole goal of, the reason why I brought this up is, I want to see the number go down. I, I think we're spending a little too much on travel. I think professional development is important. I'm just concerned that we're spending money in places we don't need to. I, my personal point of view is, one of us is capable of bringing that knowledge back to the rest of us. With adequate reporting and note-taking and meeting attendance, we can accomplish that. But I would, as the co-author of this item, agenda item, I would be happy to have it continued, keep the current policy in place until we have further exploration on the credit card situation. And I think with the understanding that staff is not a travel agency, and I appreciate you willing to travel on your own dime, at least for the airfare part of it, that's huge.
When you say the current policy, are you talking about the pooling of the money?
No, I'm talking about, my understanding, and perhaps the, the policy is pooling of the money, but I like the idea, and, and I was under the impression, and forgive me if I'm incorrect here, I'll admit it, I'm not going to make, I'm not going to be perfect on everything, but I like the idea of thirty-five, thirty-five, forty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five, and then try to keep those numbers well below that. I think that travel, me personally, travel out of state is negligible, but, you know, that's just my personal opinion. There are five opinions up here, and they all matter.
We, we do have a motion out and a second on it, and I, I want to know, the, the thing I want to emphasize about it is that it also puts pressure on us to talk about those things that are going, that were outside, so that they come up before everybody, and we talk about them in public before we're even allowed to go, to say, hey, is that the right thing to be doing? And I think that brief discussion, it doesn't have to be more than a minute or two, it kind of lets everybody know, oh, by the way, I'm going to this really cool thing, and here's why I'm doing it. And I, I don't see that, I, I hear what you're saying about that seeming like a penalty, but I don't see it that way. I see it as an opportunity to, you know, bring transparency and to talk more about stuff with our public.
Before you vote, I'm, I've lost the motion, so I don't know if you guys have it, but.
So.
I'm, I'm not keeping up, so help me here.
You're the maker of the motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we, as council, each council member and Mayor Protem has a thirty-five hundred dollar budget, the mayor has a forty-five hundred dollar budget. Any travel outside of LA, Orange, and Riverside County requires full council approval, and that we make our own travel arrangements.
Second.
I have a substitute motion. We continue this item until staff gets back to us on what really is going to best suit them. I think we all have an understanding that we want to be good fiduciary stewards, and I think everybody here has the right mindset. I think we're just going in different directions, and I think as staff dives into that a little bit more, as individuals, we dive into it a little bit more, maybe we could get universal agreement.
But with all due respect, whether or not they can decide if we're going to do the credit card or not, I still don't think that we should just be willy-nilly with a thirty-five hundred dollar budget and send people to Yosemite or wherever if it's not needed. So irrespective of if there's a credit card or not, I believe that any travel outside of those three counties, we need to have, we need to have an understanding and a discussion if it's really in the city's best interest to send somebody there.
Yep.
So I don't know if continuing it's going to change that.
See your point.
So I think the motion's still.
Second, and then a substitute motion.
Substitute motion would require a second on the substitute motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
So the substitute motion is, again, for clarification, that we continue the item and maintain the, well, I'm, I'm not completely clear what the substitute motion would, would.
Maintain the, just maintain the current policy, pending staff review, and what best works with staff and also holds us financially accountable.
Okay, so from my perspective, the clarity from, the only item that I'm bringing back is the mechanics of how we pay for them, candidly. Not what is done, not how is, who's deciding what's acceptable travel.
Correct.
Not how much goes to each council member or anything.
Correct.
The only thing I'm going to do is say, we either use a credit card or we pay you by receipt.
Right.
On a claim form.
And credit.
That's the only issue that I think that we're sort of still pending, am I right, Frank and Tui? If, if the understanding is that you make your own travel arrangements, that's the other issue.
Correct, that's the big one.
Yeah, I'm going to. So are we clear here that what I'm bringing back is, is not necessarily addressing the other issue that Councilwoman Miles suggested, right? Am I right, or am I, am I interpreting what, what's, what we're being asked to do? I want to be clear what I need to bring back to you.
Yes.
Okay.
So you vote on both of them, right?
So call the.
Well, the substitute motion would replace, so if that motion approved, then they would not vote on the original motion, correct? I find my rules of order still click, I think that's.
Throw in the substitute.
So we vote on the substitute, and then the original motion does not get approved or even voted on.
Yeah, unless the.
Unless the.
The substitute fails.
Fails.
So we're voting on the substitute right now, which is to continue.
Yes, with the direction to come back.
And if the substitute fails, then you would take. And if the substitute fails, then you would take-
Then we do my motion.
Right.
Correct. Vote.
I pressed mine.
It fails two to three with Councilman Colacott and Mayor Rosini voting yes, and the other three members voting no for the substitute motion. So now it would revert back to the original motion, which you would, you should probably, just for sake of why I change the air conditioning, clarify-
Say it again.
Clarify, restate, just for the record.
Okay, the motion is that we, that the four council members stay within a $3,500 budget, mayor gets a $4,500 budget, any travel outside of Riverside, Orange, and LA County requires full council, come before the council an approval, and that we make our own travel arrangements, so we do not burden staff.
Is it allowable to make a substitute to this motion at this time?
I think there, I think you have the ability to do that, providing there is a second.
Okay.
You can also make, if, to the extent if it's just wanting to amend the motion, you have the ability to amend. So you can either substitute or amend, however you feel appropriate.
Okay, then amend.
And then she would have to be willing to accept, the maker of the motion, original motion would have to be willing to accept the amendment. Again, am I right?
I would like to expand the area to all of, you know, local Southern California to include Orange, Riverside, Los Angeles, San Bernardino, and San Diego counties, because they're, it's all within our general area here.
And we're staying under our 3,500?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
So that changes the, what items come forth back.
Okay.
So then the maker of the motion will be acceptable, is a second of the motion acceptable with that amendment?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, now we can vote, now we're-
Can I, I hate to throw this out. In terms of the process for us to get approval back, we haven't talked about, is it just, we bring it to the council, we talk about it. So what happens, like, the Washington DC trip is in January, should we just bring that up now, and is that, can we just drop this into-
Not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so we'd have to wait, and then-
So any new travel outside, but it's still covered under, so I still am now, if I go, I'm using 52.8% of my available budget.
So I would interpret this, and again, if I'm wrong in my interpretation, please correct me now, but everything that has been approved, booked, or signed up at this point is grandfathered in. So however, with the exception, like Councilwoman Miles said, your dollar amounts count against that.
Right.
So if you've made a decision to go somewhere already, it's been booked and ready to go, then you're good to go without going to council. Anything moving forward would necessitate council approval. And I would envision, if the council is willing to sort of accept, sort of a thought here, is I can agendize each month just a consent item that lumps all travel in there together, any requests, and you simply just address those as an agenda item each month as a consent item, and to the extent anyone wants to pull them and say, well, wait a minute, five of you are going to Washington, why are we doing this or not, if anyone doesn't see a problem, but that would, might expedite the process, and we could, as a routine monthly agenda item on the consent calendar, which might help address some of the angst that Mayor Pro Tem pits had.
I like it.
I'm sure it completely addresses it, but it might help a little bit.
That was good, Steve.
Okay. Am I restating it one more time?
No, I think we're good. With the exception, her motion would be that we stay with the 3,500, or the limits, and that everyone makes their own, I'm going to add that up to the higher priority, everyone makes their own arrangements, and that anything outside the Southern California area, I guess, is broadly defined at this point now, to include pretty much everything except Imperial County or something that, you know, that isn't that, right? So that would be included, that would be, require council approval.
Correct.
Going forward.
Going forward.
Are we good?
Yep.
All right, is everyone clear? Is it clear?
I've heard it.
Okay.
What is it?
You got that? Passes four to one with Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Pitts, voting, recording a no vote. Okay.
All right, next item, seventeen.
Item seventeen was requested again by Mayor Rosini and Councilman Pitts, and as you recall, that each year we go through a process where we assign, and you each express your interests for, you each express your interest in the committees and whatnot that you would like to be part of. You have received, if I'm not mistaken, something from Kim, my staff, an email within the last week or so, roughly, expressing, requesting your input on what your committees and membership you would like to do. There's a number of different categories of committees represented on joint government entities, where we have, like, participation because of nature of our, like the fire authority we're part of, so we get a seat with fire authority. We get a seat with the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District by nature of us being part of that district. Same with the sanitation district, and same with the library advisory board. Then there are committees that the council has created, which are just subsets of council themselves, and typically, or in all instances, consist of just two council members. And then there are what we would call council advisory committees, which are inclusive of one council member and public members, volunteers. And then we also have nonprofit liaisons for both the Villa Park Library and the Community Services Foundation. So there are a number of different categories. Councilman Pitts and, I mean, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Pitts and Mayor Rosini requested this, so now I'll defer to them when we're available to answer any questions.
Yeah, I received the notice from Kim, and I've brought up, I've been fairly vocal over the years about all these committees and staff time requirements and things of that nature. So I sat down and put a little spreadsheet together for everyone's view, and I did not include the committees that we have seats on that are outside of Villa Park, like the vector control, the fire department, and those, because I think those are, you know, ones that don't need to be included here, because they meet every month, and we do attend those. But if you look at, if you look at the meetings, what I tried to do, I went back through all the agendas for the last 12 months, and I counted the number of times we said no meeting, or, and I counted it as an X if there was a meeting. And then I put in there, city staff needed, because some of the meetings don't require that the city staff be involved, an agenda, you know, Ray has to attend a lot of these meetings, Akram has to attend a lot of the meetings, Steve attends the majority of them. We require staff time to develop agendas, post them, and all kinds of different things that go on with the meetings. So what I was trying to do was to give you all information, this is, all this is, is information, it's not, you know, do we keep this one, or do we throw that one out type thing, but this is so you can be informed of what really took place in the last 12 months, and who attended what and who didn't, and most importantly, what initiatives came out of those. Because if you read, if you go back and read the agendas, a lot of the meetings just said, we discussed, we discussed. There were no formal, what do I say, things, initiatives that came out of it as a result of it. You know, it was updates. We did a lot of updating in a lot of our meetings last year. So, and then some of them are required, like the CDC, because of the CUPs, the variances and things like that. The foundation meets every month, okay? So there is, there are some things that are substantive that come out of some of these committees, but I just, this eats up a lot of, in my opinion, staff time. We're all in a volunteer position, and it takes away, you know, from our families and everything else to have to attend these meetings. So I just, I did this for information only, and, you know, hopefully it'll help you make the decision about what committees we really truly need, because there's an awful lot of blanks there. And if you look at, especially the category P, where you talk about the time spent by the city, I mean, 207 hours in a 12-month period of time spent by our city staff just for those meetings, that's a lot. That's a lot of Tui's time, it's a lot of Kim's time, it's a lot of Ray's time, it's a lot of, you know, Frank's time, it's a lot of people's time in the city. And we look at the spreadsheet, and we can't get things done because we're sitting in committee all the time. That's my only comment about that. So I put this together for information.
This is great, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, your comments, plural. I concur. I think the origins of the number of committees came out of some frustrations and disappointment with either from council members not being appointed, and whether real or perceived, that's not, that's not an issue, whether there's some people being appointed to too many committees or not enough. But what is abundantly clear, in my opinion, is that there are some committees that there are, they're duplicative in nature. The Public Safety Committee, in my opinion, for instance, Robbie and I both have agreed that when you have the Orange County Fire Authority on one hand, and you have the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee on the other hand, the need for that one committee in particular is non-existent. You have fire, and you have police, so that particular committee, in my opinion, is not necessarily of value to our residents, to our staff, and to our fellow council members. So in particular, I would like that committee to be done away with. I think that there are some committees that could be convened on an ad hoc basis, that we don't need to have standing committees on some of these things. For instance, human resources, we need that once, maybe twice a year. There is a valid, there is a valid need for it, there's no doubt, but again, that's not something that necessarily has to be a full standing committee. The citizens advisory committees, in my opinion, are extremely valuable. They provide a wealth of information at little to no cost to our residents. Staff time certainly is important, and I'm glad that Robbie's considering that, I think that's valuable. But I think our resident volunteers, whether they have an expertise in engineering, whether they have an expertise in law enforcement, whether they have an expertise in finance, are a no-go. Those are absolutely vital to the success of Villa Park. They've proven themselves time and time again to be extremely important to our well-being. They've reduced crime, they have provided infrastructure guidance to our limited staff and the staff hours that we have available, our planner, our engineer, and our maintenance crews. Our crime is, thankfully, at a, I would venture to say, an all-time low in the past 10 to 15 years. The work of the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, their efforts in conjunction with our Neighborhood Watch, and obviously the leadership of the Sheriff's Department, and our residents, just listening to what they have to say, has been exceptional. Investment advisory goes without saying. Section 115 Trust, their financial stewardship is unparalleled. They are true leaders in the financial services community, and we're very blessed to have them.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The community, community development, the CDC, the four meetings that happened, I guess going back to some of the residents that showed up, and I think the last CDC meeting was September, and Councilman Zimmerman's point that it seems like, you know, some of these, I've had construction going on, and to have to not, to not be able to get something to council or approve through the CDC because there was no meeting. Was there no meeting in those other months because there was no, there was no need, or is it because-
You have CUPs or variances that those-
Okay.
We only, we only, we only convene the meeting because of CUPs or variances.
Okay, okay, because I was going to suggest, I know that there's, that it's a two-person committee, but just as a suggestion, if it was that somebody couldn't make it, maybe there was an alternate to the two people, so then that way, we weren't keeping residents waiting from being able to move forward with their projects.
No, Steve has done an excellent job this year of keeping us informed of, you know, and matter of fact, I think the last couple of council meetings, we indicated there was going to be a flood of these things that were going to come up and going to require our attention over the next course of the next couple of months. So we've been very careful about that. We meet when we, when we need to, only if there's variances and things like that that come up, and Ray and Steve dictate when we meet.
So-
There will be more that we'll be facing in the Community Development Committee as we update our housing element to meet these new state requirements, and that, you know, that could end up taking a lot of time. It'll be significant and controversial public policy, so.
And the thing, the thing I'd like to say about citizens advisory, I agree that we've got a lot of expertise in the city Villa Park that can help us. I just don't think that we need to make it a city committee where we've got to have staff attend, staff take notes, staff do this, staff do that. If you want to have an advisory meeting, and one of the council members wants to donate their time to sit on the committee or whatever, I think that's wonderful. And then if there are initiatives or something that will help the city, bring it to city council, either through the CDC or directly to the council, and let us vote on it, or let us hear about it. Stand up there and do a presentation and tell us about it. I'm all for that. But again, I know last year, 207 hours, I kept, we kept Steve away from his wife and family, and along with a lot of the other staff. So I just want to be careful about how much we overtax our staff so that we can truly get things done. You know, I just don't see, I just don't see the need to get together, have an agendized meeting, take minutes, just to give a bunch of people updates.
I agree. So can we make recommendations on getting rid of some of these? Are we allowed to-
I guess it's open for discussion in terms of what we want to do with these committees.
Chad, did you have anything to say?
I'm eagerly waiting.
Okay.
Before we talk about the actual committees, one of my concerns is that these are citizens advisory committees, they don't make any policy, they don't make any decisions for the city. What they do is they consider various subjects, for example, investment matters, and they make recommendations to the city council, and they presented an open forum to the city council. I'm not sure why we need to have detailed minutes of these. I think the key thing that's of interest is what are the recommendations to those committees to the city council? So I think that would take a tremendous amount of the staff burden away from supporting these committees.
Is that a Brown Act thing, or is that, I'm-
No, because these are not, these are-
Ad-hoc.
Decision-making bodies.
Okay.
These are residents that can make recommendations, whether it be on, you know, how to best repair or replace utility cuts, or make investment decisions, or whatever, you know, what are the best alternative investment opportunities?
Right.
Just a point of clarification, if the council, and we were just discussing, if the council creates a committee, and it does make recommendations that have subsequent fiscal implications to the city, we are required by law, the Brown Act, to record, to have post agendas, and to have minutes recorded, to minutes provided. Now, we do provide some reaction minutes, we don't provide detailed narrative minutes, so we do, we do deviate from that, but we do provide by law, we're required to provide minutes agendas, and we have by council policy, recorded those minutes, recorded those meetings, and posted them on our website as well.
Steve, if you had some input, because I understand Chad is waiting for some comments from Crystal, but I'd like to hear from staff on this. I think Robbie raises a great point. I think that we all have some valid points on this. I've shared my personal frustrations with you on some of these matters. What's your point of view? What's staff's point of view on this?
Uh, just-
This is your opportunity.
My opportunity is I attended all 207 hours. Every one of them. And I'm not, they're all of value, but it depends on where the value is, and whose eyes it is, and I don't want to diminish the value of anybody's input or discussion. My only observation is something I think I've shared with everybody, is where we have a council subcommittee that consists of two council members, they don't truly have any authority to do, make a decision, and many times they're duplicative of, and I mentioned it to you, I believe, Mayor, that they're duplicative of, you know, like, we have public safety, so LEAC meets, and you have the other. So, you know, in the event that there were a public safety sort of crisis issue, you can create an ad hoc committee. So my suggestion is you have at least four of the budget, finance, public safety, public works, and human resources, which don't technically need to be standing committees, they could be ad hoc very easily, and it would probably relieve a lot of burden, because I know I'm trying to schedule meetings. I can brief two of you at any time, anyway, anyway, so I mean, I can brief all five of you. So it's not as if I can't get, reach out to you, and I try very hard to do that. So I think the, my recommendation is those groupings are called council committees with the, just the two council members only, and that's on the second page of page two of the staff, they're identified. With the exception of the community development, like I think Councilman Colacott has suggested, that one has sort of a different role than most of the others, because they pre-hear and pre-screen and do a lot of, like, the planning commission work, if you will. I do also, I would concur, if given the opportunity, that if you have a committee like that important, that we do, because they do meet, and there could be a pressing issue or things, and you all work or have issues. So I would kind of like the option of having an alternate, at least the ability to call on that person in the event that, hey, we have a meeting next month, we can't, we can't get a meeting next month, and sorry, we're going to have to hold off your CUP for another month. I would like to just have the ability to have an alternate, if I could offer that, I think. Now, the council advise, I mean, the advisory committees where the public, I think the public, we are very fortunate to have some very, very talented people. we are very fortunate to have some very, very talented people in the city of Villa Park that offer a lot of tremendous insight, and I value that insight. So, I mean, I'm not, you know, do those need to be formalized committees? That's the preference of the council. I have learned something in two years, that nobody with expertise is shy about coming and telling me in Villa Park. I hear a lot from a lot of people, even if they're not experts, and I don't mean that as a negative. They're entitled to bring forward their comments. So, I do hear a lot, but having experts forward is a nice resource. But typically, I lean on a lot of those people anyway, so I, you know, it's the preference of the council. And I do believe that there's a tremendous value, and we have people that I talk to about issues that aren't even on these committees, that I'll talk to, just because I know they know these issues, and I'll talk to them. So, I mean, it's kind of, the council advisory committees, I think, serve a valuable input. My only request is, and I know we do this in that, those committees, is the idea that we have to have a mandatory monthly meeting of those committees gets a little bit onerous, because that's sort of like saying, okay, Steve, you've got four mandatory hours, well, four meetings plus preparation plus whatever. So, if you could sort of allow them the discretion, say, hey, look, we're going to take a, LEAC did it on their own volition. They said, we're going to meet every other month, and man, that was probably, you know, that was a welcome, nice thing, because it probably made a lot of sense for everybody. We actually took a hiatus during the summer, as I recall, because of everybody's schedule. That's part of the, that's really nice. So, the value of committees is no question, there's citizen input, and you see them all over. My colleagues in other cities have these committees. It varies. The preference to have committees or not committees depends on the council. For instance, they have two committees in Laguna Woods, and they're a larger city than our, but not much larger, they're larger. They only have two committees. And so, but that's because they prefer to deal with things at the council in full, in totality. That's just their philosophy, and it's the preference of the council, what you want to do. I don't want to dictate what the council, you guys are all elected, you make your decisions. I'm offering as a value, and I'm certainly willing to spend that time. I'd love to have some of my 207 hours back, but I will do what the council asks.
Well, I think we're going to get you some of those 207 hours back. The question is, what's the best method for our residents, and staff, and council members?
And I would offer too, the last thing, is those represent the joint government committees. Some of those committees, and you have seen that, staff attend with their representatives. I don't do that, just simply because, you know, that would be another 200 hours. But I would say that there's opportunities, if anyone wants to share agendas with me, and I know you and I talk about Fire Authority pretty regularly, but I would be horned and happy to talk, because I do have some background, expertise, and knowledge, or one of those. I don't get as actively engaged in those, so if you talk about those four committees, I don't really have a lot of impact with those, but I used to run the county library system, so I have a sense of, you know, if somebody wants to talk to me about those, I can say, hey, you guys should agendaize something, or we could talk about something. I'm more than happy to, but I don't have a lot of really time demands on those four committees right now. I hope that's sort of general, without offending anybody.
I think so. Crystal, you had some comments?
I was just...
Well, he was waiting for her.
He was waiting.
I'm probably going to step on toes if I talk, so...
I concur with Steve, and I was just going to make suggestions, just that public safety gets, I don't want to say removed, I don't want to offend anyone either, but it's just the two council members. But I think of the five council committees, Human Resources, I think, is on as-needed basis, and I think Human Resources would be all five of us, and that would be one that we could all just tackle at a City Council meeting, because it looks like it never even is an issue, but it's nice to see up there. Public Works and Engineering, I don't know why we can't meld that in with Infrastructure. So, get rid of that one. And then, Public Safety, merge that into LEAC. And as far as Budget and Finance, could that go in with the Investment Advisory? Could you merge those, or is...
That's exactly what I think.
Well, candidly, one of those members, by resolution, has to be a member of the Investment Advisory.
So, yeah, so...
That's sort of a lock-in.
So, of the five, you get rid of three, and really, you're getting rid of four, but you're not. You're just waiting until there's an issue with the Human Resources, and you keep the CDC.
Well, but doesn't Budget and Finance, before the Investment Advisory Committee ever came up, 20 years ago, or whenever it was, that committee existed to work with city staff to develop the draft budgets? And I presume that's still the case?
Typically, what it's evolved into, at least, it had evolved into a process where they sort of approved the budget, and met maybe twice a year. So, we sort of went to a new process this year, where we had workshops, and we sort of talked through what you would have talked through in those committees, but we did it at large in a workshop situation. So, if you recall, remember how we did that, we talked about the priorities and what we wanted to include. So, we sort of moved away from that, and that's what the Budget and Finance Group used to do, and now we sort of had the full council do that.
Just doing the full council.
So, we kind of did that with the full council, candidly. That's how I sort of tweaked the process, just because it was very valuable to get everybody's input on the budget, as opposed to getting two, and then turning around and saying, well, let's now revise our budget, and having to go do all the documentation again.
Okay.
So, are you dealing with, just a question, and I'll...
Okay.
Just a question, I mean, Human Resources, would you be dealing with things that you don't necessarily deal with at the council level on a full, open council meeting, because they're sensitive issues?
Well, those are going to be closed-session items typically, anyway. But, for instance, a scenario would be an event that you wanted to discuss, perhaps, the evaluation of the, well, we did have an ad hoc committee that did the evaluation, if you recall. That's what the Human Resources Committee has done, or negotiated a contract, or maybe do a recruitment flyer. But those tend to be something that you can do on an ad hoc basis. You don't necessarily need to have a standing committee for that. And so, for instance, that committee doesn't have the authority necessarily to do anything, but you remember the evaluation, those two kind of got together, and we talked about goals, if you will, and things. But that was sort of an ad hoc committee, I don't think, that was not the Budget and Finance, it was an ad hoc that you created. And that's probably, I would imagine, that scenario. Now, the other, in the past, that group has also approved the budget and salary resolution, but we've sort of merged that in the entire budget process, again. So, the full council has the opportunity to weigh in on that, which includes the salaries of all staff. Yeah, and it also includes any sort of raises or whatever. We're different than a lot of other cities, we don't have unions, we don't have negotiations where we have to go meet with a negotiation. That's sort of, depending on your perspective, but it is something that is very different from a lot of other cities, so we don't have to negotiate, so you don't have a subcommittee of the council going to negotiate with the union or something like that. So, the ad hoc committee on the Human Resources is a very functioning, viable option, I think, if that answers your question. But the kind of thing, if you were saying you wanted to recruit for a new city manager, or whatever, that's where you could have that, you know, you create an ad hoc committee and say, okay, we're going to have two guys pull together, a flyer, a job, what we're looking for, or whatever. But, again, that can be handled on an ad hoc basis. That's the kind of issue that's been handled in the Human Resources Committees.
Okay, so, this is all great. What's really good about the thing that Robbie put together for us is that unfortunately, what it shows is, while I think we're all on the same page in terms of where the overlap is, that alleviates a grand total of 12 hours out of the 207, that's less than, that's about a 5% reduction. So, we're not really getting to the meat of the matter quite yet. And it seems like we're almost self-regulating in some ways already, because the committees that were absorbing and combining weren't meeting and consuming the resources that we're trying to free up and trying to give back time to. I think there might be some other things that we need to look at. One of them might be, you know, we do this in my work, and I'm a tech guy, but planning meetings ahead, posting agendas, and having online discussion about items, email discussion about issues, I find really useful. We could certainly pass emails, the five of us, assuming there's some sort of transparency that we can provide to allow everybody else to see that, or there's some way of...
You really do have to...
I know.
Our city attorney's crediting here.
Can't do that. Can't do that.
But if we had maybe like a public forum, and we posted an agenda on a forum, and said, hey, here are some issues that we want to talk about, and instead of spending two hours in a committee meeting, we talked about it on a forum, and we came to some, like, people had comments, and they could put notes on it, and then we got to the meeting, and we said, great, we've already talked about this, we spend less time, and that might reduce some of the...
You would not be able to have a full council dialogue in that forum. Let me just say it that way, is that an appropriate way to say it?
So, we couldn't all comment on stuff publicly in an open discussion?
How is that reducing hours?
It would have to be agendaized and treated as a City Council meeting.
With the time certain and the place certain, that they would have the opportunity to participate.
I was just throwing out ideas, maybe that won't work. I'm just trying to think about some way that we could take some of that pressure off of the actual meeting, and having staff doing work there, get some of the same ideas out there, and then accomplish the same thing.
One way that could be done is take all of these council committees, the advisory committees, the nonprofits, and you just don't require staff, you don't have agendas, you just turn them all into advisory committees, and if people want to attend and do it, if you want to chair something with infrastructure management, do it. Get the input, then bring it to the council. Don't create a formal process to do that. It's like, all these turn into ad hoc, basically, is what you're doing.
So, for the Brown Act, and I think what he's, once the council creates a committee structure, and they become Brown Act, subject to Brown Act. In the event that, say, Councilman Pitts, say, he wants to have a workshop, say, on the Wanda Green Belt, he can have a meeting without anybody, he does it on his own volition. Now, the other council members may be restricted from participating in that at the meeting, right?
What?
Absolutely, yes.
But, if he wants to do it on his own, it's not an agenda, he just says, I'm going to have a forum, and I'm going to sponsor a forum on the Wanda Green...
But we can't, as citizens, we can't come to...
Not unless it's a Brown Act, that would have to be a Brown Act agendaized meeting.
Right, so if you were to have more than, if you were to have a quorum of city council members, three, if there were three city council members there, then, and you were talking about matters that were within the jurisdiction of the city, that becomes a Brown Act violation if it's not agendaized and allow for public comment and discussion, open discussion.
Well, I wonder, even though, as Chad pointed out, removing or absorbing some of these is, you know, around 5% of the 207 that you're away from your family and taxing staff, I wonder if it doesn't make an impact, though, because then that's agendas they don't have to post, and things online they don't have to worry about, and, you know, communications going on with the different council members of, is there a meeting, is there not a meeting? So, although it may be a physical four hours or five, you know, on there, it might actually free up some time. Plus, they're not going to have to make travel arrangements anymore. So, that frees up time, too.
I'm going to recognize Councilman Colacotta.
That frees up tweets time, not mine.
I'm going to recognize Councilman Colacotta, and then, I think, if everybody's had their fair share, allow some public input, and then have this matter come to a close.
I think City Manager Franks made a good observation earlier, that we don't have to necessarily meet every month, that maybe we look back at the schedules, for example, the Infrastructure Committee, maybe we meet every other month or quarterly, and reduce, I think that will have a significant and clear reduction in the staff burden that way. I don't know that we need to solve all the problems of Villa Park in our committees tonight, but I think we've identified some things that we can move forward on that will make a significant difference, and see how things work out, and come back and visit this another time in the future.
Can I make a recommendation?
All ears.
One or two or three of the council members get together as an ad hoc committee, and figure out a way to reduce staff time, and come up with a recommendation for council.
That is, it's entirely acceptable, if you create an ad hoc committee that is temporary in nature and single purpose, then it's not a Brown Act committee, am I correct?
Right, it's just two council members.
So, if you were to say, we're going to create an ad hoc committee of so-and-so and so-and-so to come back with recommendations, you can create that on what the council should consist of, and that is their sole purpose, and they will go away after they come back with recommendations. I think you have not created, and they have to come back to the full council with their recommendations, then you have not created a Brown Act, and that subcommittee can do that, and you can do that tonight.
Taking all of this that we've put together into consideration, all the staff information with regards to the time that's required and so forth, and look at everything, because, like I said, this is too much.
I think that Councilman Colacotta's got some great ideas. I think going from 80 to 40 hours is huge, because that's what cutting that in half would do. I think you've got a valid idea there. I would be happy to, if it's acceptable to my fellow council members, be a part of that with you, since we're the sponsors of this.
Let some of the new folks weigh in, too. Let them do it.
Well, I understand that, but if we sponsor this, we would like to have a say-so on this.
I'm talking about you and whoever.
Okay. Whoever, you guys want to draw straws and flip a coin?
We can throw shampoo.
What's that?
I'd like to hear what the public has to say about this. Anybody want to have comments about this? Okay. Hearing none, is that you want to form a motion?
Yes. Motion to create an ad hoc committee, made up of council members, to review all the information, talk to staff, come back with a recommendation next month.
I'll second that.
I think you'd probably need to create the, but creation of it, and then appointing the people to that ad hoc committee, you'd have to pick who those want to be tonight.
Right.
A minimum or a maximum of two?
Yeah.
Okay. Separately?
No, you could do that as part of a motion. Say that we create an ad hoc committee, say, Councilman X, Councilman Y, or Councilwoman whatever, and then do it.
I'm not going to appoint someone, I'm just going to ask who wants to do it.
I'll do it.
Okay, you and Vince.
I'll partner with you on that. Thank you.
So, the motion would be that there, an ad hoc committee be created with the Mayor Rossini and Councilwoman Miles to come back and to review the committee structure, and come back with recommendations to full council in January. Is that...
Perfect.
What the motion would be? So, that would be your motion?
And I'll second that.
Okay. We're getting there.
A little bit surely.
Okay, so, when you're ready?
Please vote.
That passes five zero.
Item 18. Now it is time to hear individual council member information items, starting with Councilmember Miles.
I have none, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Zimmerman?
I was just going to say, I know our mayor has a birthday coming up, and I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays to all.
When is it?
December 27.
Oh, goodness.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Colacotta?
Well, I think we all had a great time on the Santa tour a couple of Saturdays ago. It was good to go out and see all the neighborhoods, and all the kids, and all the parents. It's always a wonderful time, and I think it's a great tradition in Villa Park that we all enjoy. And, of course, we all also participated in the boat parade, which is a lot of fun. I attended, Assemblyman Choi had a reception last week, which I attended. I spoke with the Assemblyman and his staff, and we discussed a couple of ideas there. And also attended the, I was invited to attend the oath of office ceremony at the city of Orange, and I saw Mayor Mark Murphy sworn in. It was interesting to hear during that presentation, or that presentation, how the city of Orange has 700 employees. By comparison, the city of Villa Park, we have, let's see, four full-time, and a couple of...
Five full-time.
Five full-time. So, just to show how different our two cities are. But it was a very, very nice ceremony, very nice going away for Mayor Tita Smith, who had served on council and as mayor for, I believe, 12, 15 years.
I just want to thank city staff, and especially Mike, again, for everything for last, was it last weekend, weekend before last? It was an amazing, you know, what we had here in City Hall before, you know, the boat parade, I mean, he just, he just, Mike's amazing, and it's not just Mike that puts all this together, it's all of you. And it's the staff from the foundation, you were involved in that, I want to thank you too as well, and everybody. So, just, I can't thank you enough, appreciate it.
I agree.
The only comments I have to say are thank you. Thank you to staff, thank you to our residents for coming out to the boat parade and Santa tour, thanks to the Orange County Fire Authority and the Sheriff's Department for making those events. events possible, our foundation partners and volunteers. And one meeting that I wanna discuss is recently we had some significant power outages and there's the public safety power shut-off program that Edison is employing in, in all major large utilities. I wanna thank Steve for setting up a meeting. I have some concerns about that particular program and how it's affecting our, our residents. We've yet to receive all the feedback from Edison, so I'll refrain from further comment, but just know that that's something that I'm, I'm interested in and we're keeping an eye on. I wanna make sure we have safe, reliable power coming through Villa Park to our seniors that have limited mobility and health issues and our newer, newer residents that may have sensitive electronics and that everybody as a whole is provided the best level of utility service that we can get. And thank you for Edison for coming to the table with that, that meeting. That's it.
Well, before we go, I just want to, for the record, these holidays coming up, the city hall will be closed Monday, December 24th and Tuesday, December 25th and New Year's Eve, the following Monday, Tuesday. So, I just know that people coming knocking on the door, there'll be nobody home on those two and I obviously wish everybody a very happy holidays, but city hall be closed and we will see you on that Wednesday, both days thereafter, after the 20, December 26th and January 2nd. We'll be open for business again.
Thank you and please pardon my voice, I'm a little under the weather. And with that, we are adjourned.